...present what we've been doing with the technology since this is our first year one-on-one. So, we took, we each took a content area, thank you so much. That's what team members are for. And we are going to showcase some of the stuff that we do. It's kind of a teacher presentation, kid presentation. When we're all done talking, then we're going to ask you to get up and go around the kids and they'll show you what they've been doing, okay? So, we're going to start out with math. So, we use the Chromebooks in a variety of ways for math. We start out, we use it to support our envisioned curriculum and then with that we do testing and quick checks. We do games, the usual stuff. So, this is just some pictures of kids in my class doing quick checks. And then they also use the paper version and manipulatives as well. So, it's a variety, it's intertwined. We practice math facts using the extra math program. And then I support that with paper and pencil. And we transfer what they've learned. Sorry, guys, I don't do this. We transfer what we've learned to Rocket Math, okay? And then to fulfill the district Dreambox requirements, we use it for Dreambox as well. But the fun stuff is what they're going to show you tonight. So, Genevieve and Maya are going to show you how they've used QR codes to do a fun math activity. I'm done.
All right, so next we have reading. For reading, we use it all over the board and we have the luxury of being able to move into our wind time with it as well. So, we use RAS Kids and Epic books. We're able to create the differentiated instruction during wind time. We have exposure to Google Classroom, practice of computer and typing skills, exposure to Google Slides, also practice with that. Immediate cases of feedback is possible through the comments that we can leave. And then we have online discussion and feedback from classmates. And then we've kind of created our own quick checks. For assessments, we use quick checks in our math program. And we've morphed that into our Google Forms. So, we've been able to put like a quiz and have them answer that and give them immediate feedback as well for reading. And then the use of Chromebooks during the reading block allows more time for the teacher to meet with the Tier 2 and Tier 3 intervention students, which are the ones who need the most one-on-one time with the teachers. So, here are some pictures of my fellow classmates on RAS Kids Epic. Up at the top, I have a picture of how we use Google Classroom. So, I have each of my reading groups in a Google Classroom. And then they're able to go on there and click on the Google Form and take the quiz or the test for the day. And then as you walk around, Nathan and Jackson will be sharing their extension reading group that they have. They've done a lot of work with these this year and they have blown me away with how much they've grown. They are very, very diligent about getting locked on every day and getting their task done. They love it. They'll be sharing that with you. We're onto writing.
All right, writing. So, we use Chromebooks during our writing block to use keyboarding without tears, which is a great way for our kiddos to be exposed to the proper home role and hopefully becoming more efficient in their typing skills. So, that is one of my kiddos doing that. But it's been really beneficial for Writers Workshop time. You can use Google Classroom so the kids have access to their anchor charts and their checklists that build off of what we're doing during our mini lessons. Also, it's been a great way for the kiddos to have voice of choice as to how they can publish their stories. So, we can use Google Docs, Google Slides. But one thing that my kiddos have just tried is a site called Little Bird Tales. And the nice thing about it is our kids are constantly writing every day, but when they want to publish, they have different options as to how to share with their classmates. So, when you walk around today, I have Jackson here. And Jackson's going to share his realistic fiction story that he just did for our latest Writers Workshop event. And then Brielle is here as well to share hers. So, they are eager to share their stories with you as well.
And I kind of have the ad ball of them all. The students have been working on digital scrapbooks since, I think, the first week of school. So, this is going to be something that they're working on the entire school year. So, I mean, I've got a lot of slides, but we're just going to keep adding to it. So, they created a digital scrapbook. It's really student-led. There are a few slides that everybody has to have. Like, you have to have slides about math. You have to have slides about reading and writing. But then they can add some other slides in about memories and things that they want to remember about their second grade year. For example, Conrad was just working on his today and we have the Super Bowl competition going on for the food drive. And he wanted to remember that we had some competitions this year. So, he documented that in his scrapbook by taking a picture and talking a little bit about that. It's a great way for them to practice the computer skills and the typing skills. And they're getting amazing at Google Slides. Probably better than me at some things. And it's awesome because we have certain kiddos who know a ton about it and they're able to help their peers learn those things as well. So, they're kind of all at different stages with it, but they're working at their own pace, which is nice. And it's just a great way to remember the hard work and fun that we've had in second grade. So, I have Lily here and Conrad here. We're going to show you a little bit of their slides that they've been working on for their digital scrapbook. And that is what we have for you. So, the next part, we would love it if you would walk around and if you could go visit some friends. And they will show you what they've been working on and kind of explain maybe their favorite parts of things that they've been working on and how they like having technology in the classroom. Is that all right?
Good. This meeting has been postponed in all the normal postponed places. We're on to approval of the agenda. Could we bring a...
We modify it right up. Yeah. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with modification that the audit gets put first.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor then say aye. All the same time, the motion is carried.
All right, where would you guys like to go?
Wherever you'd like. Get my note.
All right. I'm Brian Macneck. I'm a partner with Riley Parent Madden. I'm the partner for the audit. We issued our audit report probably mid-November 7th. They're due to state on December 1st, so we have plenty of time to meet their deadline. So, just kind of some highlights from the audit. I'm not going to go through it in very detail because I don't want to bore you. So, we had full cooperation with the staff during the audit. Sherry and her team were very helpful, so they did a great job. We issued an unmodified opinion on financial statements, which is a clean opinion, which is what you're looking for. Some of the operating results, you had an increase in your general fund balance by $435,000. Your fund balance, your general fund, you have non-spendable of $114,000. And that's the amount that we're going to prepay at the end of the year. And then we also have unassigned, which is $3,248,000. And you want to have a fund balance probably above 20% of your operating budget for, it helps with your borrowing, you don't have to do short-term borrowing. And you guys are currently at 34.46% compared to 30% the year before. So, you guys are at a rate where you don't have to do any short-term borrowing. So, I'll talk a little about that as we go through. Then we have our general fund budgetary information. These are page 32 and 33 of the audit. We list your budget expenses for total for Fund 10 and 27. You budgeted $10,183. Actual expenses were $9,756. So, you spent 95.81% of your budget. Revenue, you budgeted $10,058,000. Actual revenue was $10,192. So, you received 101% of your budget. Debt activity for the year, there was none. You paid off your debt last year, so, but subsequent to the year-end, you obtained a $500,000 general obligation debt. And that is for a solar panel project. So, that's going on currently or is it done?
Perfect.
Okay, so, so that is the only debt that you currently have. Then we have the lovely pension and OPEB that we have in the audit report. Your pension, this is the WRS. So, we have a net pension asset this year, or a liability, I'm sorry, of $1,116. We have deferred outflows related to the pension of $2,887 and deferred inflows of $1,537. So, you actually have a net pension of $233,350 at the end of the year. So, once you net all those, it increases your fund balance by $233,000. So, then we have our supplemental pension. That's footnote seven on the audit. Here we have deferred outflows of $66,000. We have total supplemental pension liability of $209. So, we have a, call it a negative fund balance of $143,000 related to that. So, that's unfunded. And then we have our OPEB. We have deferred outflows of $41,000, deferred inflows of $12,000. And then we have a net OPEB liability of $86,000. So, your net OPEB liability at the end of the year was $57,000. We also do a state single audit. We do not do a federal single audit because you do not receive over $750,000 federal funds. We did a state single audit. There were no findings that we had to report it for that. So, that's always good. Then we also report in a separate letter, the management letter, which is the shorter of the letters. Here we list any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. We have one significant deficiency that pretty much every school district has, you guys have every year, and that's preparation of the financial statements. Because with the financial statements, all 60 pages or how many there are, the only thing that we are really responsible for is putting our opinion letter on it. So, we actually prepare the financial statements for you and then you guys review those. So, you really would have to have someone in Sherry's position that probably was recently in public accounting and would be able to actually know all the appropriate disclosures and everything. So, most districts don't have that, so I would not be concerned. Then we also have a couple other items in there, your actuarial report for your OPEB that it needs to be completed as of July 1st, 2019, which will be used for the next year's audit. So, and then GASP 84. This is a new GASP that will be applied next year. And the only thing that really applies is for Fund 60, which is your student activity funds. They're probably not going to be student activity funds anymore. They'll be going to Fund 21. So, that'll be a change that's coming up this next year. And I know Sherry's already working on that, so. And then also GASP 87, which is leases, that will be effective June 30th of '21. So, we have a year on that. For the for-profits and nonprofits, larger companies haven't adopted that already. For the smaller ones, they were supposed to adopt it this year, but they decided to push it back a year. So, we're hoping that they just keep on pushing it back. So, we will never have to adopt that. But that one is supposed to be taking place June 30th of '21. Any questions on the audit? I know it's exciting stuff. You guys have done a great job since, I think we've been six years now? I think it's, you guys have done 360, so you guys are doing a really good job, so.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you, Sherry.
Thank you, Tanya.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Yep, I'll work hard for that.
All right.
All right. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, so, we are on to approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of Monday, December 16th at 7:00 PM, open session. And Monday, December 16th at 6:00 PM, closed session as presented.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there any additions, corrections? All in favor, say aye. All the same sign, motion is carried. We're on to the financial report and bill listing.
All right. Voucher listing for December 12th, 2019 through January 21st, 2020. General funds payroll checks number, check number 553766 for $60.01. Next check numbers, 553767 through 553768 for $75.26. Next payroll checks numbers, 553769 through 553771 for $952.01. Next direct deposit numbers, 900050815 through 900050927 for $159,906.01. Next direct deposit numbers, 900050928 through 900051036 for $135,801.25. Next direct deposit numbers, 900051037 through 900051146 for $149,617.80. Then the line of transfers, transfers for payroll liabilities players, numbers 201900150 through 201904186 for $377,105.75 for total payroll of $823,519.91. Next accounts payable, checks numbers, 54030 through 54085 for $148,330.5. Next AP wire transfer, 201900147 through 201900144 for $9,841.48. Next, we have one credit card transaction, number 122019 for $55,073.61. Then the VCH slash direct deposit numbers, 19200117 through 19200136 for $2,594.35 for total accounts payable of $215,339.49. For total disbursements then of $1,039,359.40.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Then all in favor, say aye. All the same sign, motion is carried. Okay, we are on to delegations. We heard no one has signed in to speak, so I think we're going to move on. And we are on to District Ministers' Report and Action. We've got donations to present.
So, we'd like to present four donations this evening. The first being from Dedicated Computing for $2,500 to be used for the intermediate school STEM lab computers, which are in need of replacement. Thank you to Phil for assisting with that too as well. Mary Iwansky for continuing to secure grants. We have a PPG grant for $1,000 for Merton Primary School as well as $5,000 from the Merton Intermediate One. Lake Five Mobile is recommending $500 to be donated to our primary school to focus on math and/or science. And then the PTO continues to do their amazing things and they have most recently received $1,154.40 for first grade's teen additional books to be, to go for home reading. So, a big thank you to the PTO for assisting there. Maybe we should kind of check back to... Yep. So, again, just looking for a motion to approve the donations as presented. I'll make a motion.
Oh, certainly could.
I'd ask if we could deny the PTO donation.
I'd just reverse it.
I should make that a motion.
Yep. I'll make a motion to deny the PTO donation for first grade books and accept the remainder.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Question? Everybody's clear on what's motion? Okay, all in favor then say aye. All the same sign, motion is carried.
Sherry, have we received those dollars? If we have, we will make sure we reverse that. So, yep. Thank you, Sherry. Yep, thank you.
We're on to personnel action.
Do we have to accept? Oh, so you just covered, you got it. Never mind.
So, we will, we will then reimburse that PTO, the $1,000 for those books, because those are our responsibilities. Yep, certainly are.
Can I just ask, I think other grade levels, we see grant money from PTO for books as well. I just want to be, make sure I'm consistent. Are we saying then PTO will not fund those books completely? Because I'm hearing first grade only.
I don't, the board so far has not approved any other ones that would have been for core literacy. Yep, yep, so.
All right, thank you.
So, Sarah, thank you for continuing to bring that because that's, again, that is a core function for us.
I have no problem spending it. I think it's great.
We have a core...
We have just have to...
Don't worry about it. We'll get to that a little later.
We are on to personnel actions.
Personnel actions, so, sorry about that bird walk. So, two, we have two personnel actions. One, we'd like to thank Stephanie Satula for two and a half years. Her resignation letter is presented there. And then also would like to offer Joy Bundrock a position as math and literacy interventionist from Merton Primary, Merton Intermediate School to, and you can see her letter of appointment there. So, looking for two motions, one to approve Stephanie Satula's letter of resignation and a board to approve, a motion to approve Joy Bundrock's letter of appointment as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve Stephanie Satula's letter of resignation.
Paul Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Questions, discussion? All in favor then say aye. All the same sign, motion is carried.
I'll make a motion to approve Joy Bundrock's letter of appointment. I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussion, questions? All in favor then say aye. All the same sign, motion is carried. We are on to information from the District Commissioner.
You guys are in the loop. In the loop. And we're on to committee reports.
We're on to committee reports. We've got Finance Committee.
All right. Our Finance Committee, we met last Friday. And first on our agenda, we had his speaker, Jim Bennington, talk about the copyer RFP. So, he's just going to give a very short synopsis.
Yep, so what we briefly talked about was we, starting, well, six years ago now, we entered into three-year leases for our print management system throughout the district. So, we are just finishing up our second three-year lease. And the process that we go through is I reach out to vendors that are really major players and that use the print management system that we have. Give them the layout of the buildings, approximate student counts for certain areas and wings, and say, this is our layout. We're looking to go for another three-year lease. Let's see what you can give me. The last time, we actually had a proposal that gave us more than what we had asked for, for a lot less money than our previous lease. So, that's the kind of process we're going into. We have found that a three-year lease is about right for copiers. At that point, they start breaking down. And this way, we can just wash our hands with it and move on to the next thing. So, we met just talking about the process that we're going to be going through and different options that we're going to ask vendors for, so.
Jim, approximately, how much do we print a year?
Okay, so, let's see. For the first three-year lease, we were right around 6.6 million copies, which roughly was about, you know, a little over 2 million a year. For this three-year lease, so we're about five months short of that three years. We are right around a little over 4 million. So, we've made great strides over the last few years in cutting a lot of our print usage, different curriculum, different math curriculum, that have helped that a lot. But it's, it's a chunk of money, even at .004 cents per page. I mean, it's still a lot of money, so.
So, more to come on that. We'll run that through the Finance Committee and then...
So, it's not going to be our typical RFP then because we're going to give them a chance to...
Yeah, so, the RFP really looks like, here's our, my, here are my expectations as far as the hardware, the speed, and you have to work with the software that I presently have. And they'll come back and say, okay, we can do this, this, and this at this cost. If you want to add an option of, let's say, color or a fax machine or stapling, this is how much extra it will cost. And then we just kind of go through and prioritize where we want to go. We'll get input of staff on what they think as far as the layout, that type of thing. And then we just move forward from there.
We did this approach a year ago, or three years ago as well.
Yep.
So, we kind of go back to and say, what's your best solution for us?
Yep.
We meet with each of the vendors personally and answer any questions they might have, either through a pre-bid meeting and/or an individual meeting as well.
Yep.
So, more to come, more to come on that. Our leases are up June 30th, so.
All right. And the second item we discussed was our audit firm RFP. I recommended that we go out for RFP. The last time, as Brian kind of mentioned, was 2013. And now that our board's in a really solid position, it's a good time to go out again. And there is a template for the RFP that is set up by DPI to meet all the criteria that they require. And they also provide listings of vendors who do school finance auditing. So, I will reach out to probably about five people in the area within, you know, Madison, Milwaukee, in the general area. And basically, we just want to make sure that we're getting the best price that is available for their services. So, we agreed to go ahead and do that. And then next item was to go over our quarterly budget update. So, that is all of our financial information through December 31st of 2019. And we went through all of the revenues and expenditures, all of the option codes, and discussed where we would expect to see and where we actually are. And we're looking really good right now for all of our financial numbers. Nothing really sticks out as surprising, so I only felt that we're in a very good place. If you guys have anything to add, please.
With your budget codes and a lot more detail in the committee meeting, so.
Right. And then we talked about our January membership count. And so, that was actually due to DPI on Friday, January 24th. And so, our head count, we increased by eight students. We went from 852 in September to 860 in January. And our FTE therefore also increased from 800, or from 760 to 769. So, we generally see a bump increase in membership from September to January, so this is kind of a follow-up measurement. Okay, and then after that, we talked about CPI. That has been released for our negotiations coming up. CPI has finally been calculated at 1.81%. So, we'll be using that number going forward in our salary negotiations. Next item was focused on energy funds. So, with our solar project, that was a grant that Ron submitted to receive some extra funds, and it was afforded. We weren't sure if that was going to happen, and it did. So, we received $68,182 through that grant. And at that time, we had discussed that most likely we would use that money and repay down the principal amount. So, we just talked about it in the Finance Committee and we all agreed that we're going to continue with the original plan and do that. So, I'm going to be cutting the check for that one, too. Thank you for grants. And then lastly, we just briefly discussed our LTT, our Long-Term Disability, that we provide to the district. Right now, we have various insurance rates are coming in, and that one has been provided to us that there's going to be a slight increase. And so, we discussed if we wanted to keep it looking the exact same as what we provide right now, or if we needed to cut anything. And we said, no, we're not going to cut anything. We're going to keep it the same. It was not a significant increase, so we just felt, you know, it's best to keep things where it is. And so, that was our meeting.
Any questions for the Finance Committee? We're going to move on to the Student Chief of Command.
Sure. We met on Wednesday, the 15th, and there were two core functions for the 15th of the morning was spent, we interviewed and we had presentations from six different social-emotional learning student Tier 1 curriculums. And through those conversations and through those presentations, we have narrowed it down to two, second step and positive action, that our staff is going to begin to pilot this upcoming spring and into the rest of the school year too as well. So, again, narrowed from six to two, it was, obviously, we went through them and we're real excited to begin that pilot as soon as we get those materials in hand, too. And right now, we're in conversation with... And right now, we're in conversation with our, with both of those vendors, both Second Step and Positive Action. The second half of the meeting was spent organizing our last professional development day, which was last Monday. And we broke up into teams and created basically the agenda for the morning, and then that was kicked off on Monday, so the 20th. So we're real excited about how that all turned out too as well, so. Again, from an SEL side, we're gonna continue to take a look at the student as well as the adult side as we move forward, and we'll get that meeting set up here in a little bit for the month of February, guarantee that together, so. What are we discussing?
Okay, we are on to reports and updates section, and the principals update.
Good evening, everybody.
Jim? Oh my gosh, you're right there.
I'm right there. I know, so.
Yeah, ninja, stealth, ghost, whatever you want me to call it. Uh, yeah, there are some other things. So, we're gonna just talk a little bit about some of our staff learnings at the intermediate school. Last Monday, a week from, a week, week ago, we had a great meeting with both schools. We had district elders, district employees, school board members there, it was just, it was great, and a lot of really good discussions. And the best part was, almost all of the talking was done by our staff, not by Ron, or Becca, or me, or any of our other administrators. That was, it was really done with our SEL committee, so that was, that was an amazing, amazing morning. And in the afternoon, you'll talk a little bit about what we did. We had an opportunity to do some curricular stuff here, and I got to meet with our seventh, eighth grade team for an hour, which is abnormal because of all of the things that they're doing with providing electives for our seventh and eighth grade kids. Normally, we have a 20-minute meeting at lunchtime, and I don't like to do the lunch meetings, but we spent an hour talking about a whole bunch of really good things, so that's gonna be good. Staff are still working together with their coaches or teams to discuss curriculum with students. Our teachers will be turning in their student learning objectives and professional practice goals in the next couple of weeks. And we're talking, we began talking today at our building leadership team meeting about potential scheduling changes for next year. So I know Ron has told you guys a little bit about some of the ideas we have, and we definitely want to get some staff input into what that looks like. In particular, looking at how we can provide some more planning time for our teachers during the school day, because right now, there isn't a lot of that. So we know that we need to give them an opportunity to take a breath somewhere during the day and get refocused for our kids.
So, we did, the district-wide focus, I thought was a really nice morning to launch us into our afternoon. We definitely took the stuff that we learned about in the mornings and we applied it to our team or content levels, meaning that we went back to the values and the mission and vision, then looked at our team norms. Some teams in content areas never had own norms established, and then others, we just realigned what we had and said, oh, what else are we missing? So they did some of that work on the onset of the afternoon. And then the writing professional development, and then a staff meeting happened after that. And you can see here that two of the things that we are focused on of our leadership commitments to the writing process is really around that idea of ample opportunities to write, meaning that students have the ability to choose their topics, not be told what to write about, that's one thing we're working on building capacity on. And then authentic, explicit sequence instruction. We know that students need to have it modeled right there in time in front of them, and that's a new kind of thing that staff are working on. A lot of times, we hear staff don't have stories to tell, or they aren't writers, but you really are once you dive into that and answer it. So we're gonna work on that. The biggest thing though, I think, is moving forward to this year is really this assessment, the late piece. And that really goes to formative assessment, really around preferring and strategy groups. What does that mean, is what are kids doing in the moment, and how can we continue to assess that? And so that's what we are looking at for this year. When we talk about assessment, I know staff have said, we need to get better at assessment, but what does that mean? Really, in that, during that independent work, the independent practice time, that's when you're meeting with kids and you're meeting their needs, and there's a lot of time to differentiate. So that's what we worked on in the afternoon. And then also looking at the 2021, so we see it on the horizon, that what are we going to get further along? Looking at on-demand, exemplars, checklist, and the progressions that have to do with writing. So you'll see that next year as well. So that's kind of where we're going in, where we've gone a little bit with that. We also have some staff planning and focus here too, and this is the 5K team that is working on some of the work there. And what is, we're looking at the master building schedule, really prioritizing how do we not interrupt and disrupt our students' core learning? So right now, we have a lot of things that are known, like Makerspace and Guidance and things like that, that disrupt the core instruction in reading, writing, and math, all the, the strong areas, science as well, and social studies. So that's been a focus. We led, I led the staff through a process of looking at what our staff needs and then what our student needs. And really, how do we get student needs, they should be similar, not always, but we went through and then we prioritized them and ranked them as well. So we did that during our staff meeting as well. The class list process is in full effect, looking at highly effective heterogeneous diverse groups, looking at how do we make it into a process, not just a gathering where we talk, and how do we start to how do we finish. And we do that work really, really well, looking at all the things we know about a student as a learner, what kind of groups make sense, and make sure everyone has cohorts within a classroom, that we don't need the, having parents request a teacher. All of our teachers should be able to work with our diverse groups. And then looking at emergency procedures, the, a couple of weeks ago, I was able to attend, I had the opportunity to go there because my team kind of fell ill pretty strongly, but I was there in solo. And so I was able to go ahead and learn about some of the threat assessment, and what does that mean? If there would be a threat to self or others, and what are some of the protocols that DOJ and DPI have been working through? So that was the work in hand in the process, we will continue as a team. And then 5K, myself, Abby Kalundy, we are all doing a console play book study, so we've been looking at that, how do you integrate and really understand what is play mean versus station? So I guess that's where we're at, that's a lot of stuff happening.
We really appreciate Becca going to that training. Ron had gotten sick the week before, and then I think it was the first day I'd missed school in 10 years. When your wife says to you, you're staying home because nobody else should get sick, and you listen to her, that's a really good thing, just, yeah, so I did.
But I brought home the team's certificate.
Yeah, I got a certificate for, certificate of tennis.
My grand is always quick with the certificates.
Thank you very much. So, just, there's a lot of pictures here, the one I want to start with on the left, this is Mary Ann Radcliffe. She is one of our guest teachers, and the kids loved her, she is amazing. And every time she comes here, she says, Jay, this is such a great place to be. And I just had to take a picture of her as she's taking over band, and she does lessons when John's not, I mean, she loves, it doesn't matter where you put her, she does a great job, and the kids really respect her, and she just loves being here, so I had to share that. One of our electives for fifth and sixth grade is three-on-three, and one of our students is in a wheelchair, and she chose to be in our three-on-three basketball, she plays wheelchair basketball, so she is right there, a part of everything. This is a social studies project, and I thought it was cool because they were talking about the environment's impact on animals, so they dressed up as the animals that they were talking about when they're giving their presentation. So even in fifth grade, they don't mind dressing in character. On the left is, sometimes our library is used by both of our sixth-grade language arts teachers to come together, especially when they're doing book checks and book chats, and here's Sarah Casper, it's on the floor, talking with one of the book groups, just some of that conferring that Becca was talking about. In the middle is a financial literacy game through junior achievement that our seventh and eighth grade staff is using. And the kids, it was interesting watching them go through this, because it's the first time that we really had a focus on financial literacy, and they really, they really paid attention, I think they learned an awful lot with that. On the right is Ruud Goldberg elective, that's one of those things where you've got this little tiny task that's really easy to do and you make it really difficult, so here's a fifth and sixth graders working together on the Ruud Goldberg project. I wanted to spotlight the, on the left is, right when we got back from winter break, and what our building looks like. We have, we don't have a new building, we have an old building, and John and his staff do an amazing job looking, making it look brand spanking new every single time we come back from a break. This is our fitness room, Dan Hanahan has fitness with some fifth and sixth graders, just some of the things we've been able to get with some of our FIA dollars. On the right is a science classroom, and it's talking about how Emmet, who is this ice creature that Mr. Wagner puts together, goes through all the different states of matter, so they create a poster to show how Emmet goes from a solid to a gas. So they have to work together and just share their learning away, other than just regurgitating information, this is actually putting some, some other thoughts into it. Then on the left, we had Friendship Olympics on our half-day, right before, it was on the end of the semester. Our student senate, right now, our leaders are Kerry Nimcek and Becky Averman, and the kids in particular really had a great time. So they're, we had 22 different groups, fifth to eighth grade kids, that was the whole morning, was doing activities just to build relationships through grade levels, not just a fifth-grade team or a sixth-grade team. In the middle is a picture of the learning that we had on Monday, the 20th, with different groups together having some great discussions. And our fifth graders on the right, working on some of their clay projects.
So a few highlights here from the primary school, we 4K introduced their writer's workshop, which really is this understanding that your images are putting meaning to a page, and that's what they're starting. So I got a chance to join that team to launch those, that unit this past week, which was nice. Winter assessments were here, we've been doing some, Fontis and Denell Writing Records. And then also our math assessment closed today, we got through that as well for reading and writing. Those are those earmark assessments, they're the big assessments that we just start looking, are we seeing trends and trends too? Good Character Assembly, we continue to launch and lead with merchant values that we have. This month, this past month, was all about being courageous, and so my fourth-grade principal team there, they rotate through to lead the presentations with me, so that's been something really nice. And having families come in, Sarah, as well as help lead some of that too, especially organizing all the students into that space, which is great. And then we have also the lead with me, Miss Kent has organized, so thank you. And we had Mr. Woodish there, talking about communication, effective communication was the topic. So those are some highlights. Also, we have some winter excitement, having some snow hills is always fun, especially when you have sleds. Working with our bus company too, to make sure students are bringing the sleds prior or after school, but we also have some here on site too, so that's been fun and new opportunity for kids. We had the yearbook cover artists showcased there, I don't have all of them, because most of second grade, first, and 5K got confused and didn't stay for the picture, as somebody said. So anyway, we'll retake that picture before I host it completely, but we were able to go through, and there were so many great entries, and that was really a neat thing to do, and I had the staff join in, and they did this whole voting, and it was just hard to pick one, so. Makerspace, you can see there, we're continuing to have some clap, or to have group work there. It's amazing how kids can enter a space already, you know, pretty heightened, and then it just gets calm, and they get to start really exploring and curbing me, so that's just an amazing job in there. This year too, Makerspace, the teachers are all staying to co-teach or to collaborate with, with Corinne as well, which has been a unified practice throughout, and that's shown some really positivity as well. And then PE, we've been skiing in 5K through 4th grade, and you can see they're all enjoying it. Some tiers, because it was really difficult, and some not, and so we're moving along, so that was some highlights from the primary school.
And then some of our PTO community connections, yesterday, I think it was yesterday, yes, it was yesterday. Yesterday, we had bowling at Sussex Bowl, so that's kind of on either side. And in the middle is a 3D printer, and I bring that up because as we were sitting over here and we're talking about donations, Mimic, which is an insurance company that ensures only educators, they have a really good working relationship with our district, and they have these things that are called pop-in grants, and this is one of the pop-in grants that Mary Iwansky applied for, and all of a sudden, boom, pop in, we get a brand-new 3D printer for absolutely nothing. And they were actually at our meeting on Monday, and they gave two immediate needs grants of $150 each, the primary school and two of the intermediate school. So Beck and I did the only thing that you shouldn't do when you have a bunch of people that, that put their name in a hat for getting the grants. We put all of the names in a hat, and we pulled out the two, and those were the two people that happened to win that, because making decisions was not gonna be, that was gonna be a bad thing. So we just did it that way, because then it was luck of the draw, and it wasn't Jay liked that one better, or Becca liked that one better, just all worked out, which was great.
But with those things that they need, the others, we've encouraged them to go ahead through the process of requesting and making sure they plan.
Oh, you did that?
So PTO, it was crossing yard appreciation, so just gave them a little gift, went on a walking school bus tour with me, and as we walked with the kids that were here a little early from school, I just picked up a couple more at a time, and it was a lot of fun. I think our crossing yards were like, wait, what is going on, you could tell, like, they had no clue what we were doing, but anyway, it was a lot of fun. PTO also gave staff appreciation gifts to everyone, which was really kind, and Jennifer. Massek. Massek.
Massek.
Did a nice job with that as well, so thank you. Culvers Night, it's always good to see kids, excited to see you delivering their food out into the car, which is really nice. I always tell them, like, I only took, like, one cheeseburger, but I really like, and then, you know, that's down there. And then, of course, the family bowling, and I had to get an electronic picture of her. She stands over time, so, so, lots of good stuff, and thank you, Sarah, for the bowling, it was excellent, perfectly planned, so.
That's all we got, thanks for support, we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are on to new business, and we have the 2021 open enrollment seat allocation.
Right, and kind of as a dovetail from our community forum, just in front of you is the administrative recommendations for our open enrollment seats for the 2021 school year. You'll notice that they are all unlimited except for second grade, and kind of like we talked about, just based on the current class size. We wanted to make sure that we were able to kind of cap that, to make sure they didn't spill over into creating a financial or a student burden from an individualized attention from there too. And then for eighth grade as well, just, again, that's a larger class size is what we have, just setting the cap at five right there too as well. And then you'll also see from a special education standpoint, thank you to Lori, as she creates all of the formulas, and there's a whole bunch that goes into really determining whether or not you have space in your special education program. So, at this time, we do not have any special education space, based on our current students and our current residents, so we have set the recommendation to be zero for cross-categorical special education. From a speech standpoint, we do feel that we can absorb that, so if there was a speech-only, i.e., we would be able to absorb that through open enrollment as well too, so. So again, just looking for a motion to approve the 2021 open enrollment seat allocation as presented. In that motion, you would have to specifically go assign 4K unlimited all the way through, just read that out personally, stat.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2020-21 open enrollment seat allocations as follows. 4K unlimited, 5K unlimited, first grade unlimited, second grade two, third grade unlimited, fourth grade unlimited, fifth grade unlimited, sixth grade unlimited, seventh grade unlimited, eighth grade five, cross-categorical special, special education zero, speech only across the districts unlimited.
Paul Saka?
Okay, we have a motion, a second, any discussion? Question? All favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose same time, motion's carried. We are on to IMB and new business, discussion on celebrating and finding different cultures in our schools.
So for our last meeting, it was requested that we put this agenda topic on?
Yeah, so we just kind of came up last meeting, which we were, you know, talking about all our holiday celebrations and all that, and I guess I just wanted to bring up the conversation and have a discussion around what our current practices are, and if we want to change that, or, you know, bring more different cultures in more purposefully, or, you know, actively choose to, you know, try and not, you know, expose kids to, uh, that wasn't gonna sound right. Actively, well, no, we're like, we're like, so we have, you know, Christmas parties, basically, right, at the end of the year, and so, you know, one option is to genericize it and have it be a winter party, and not have it be Christmas. Another option is, okay, you can have Santa in your holiday party, but then let's also talk about, you know, other religions and their, you know, celebrations and festivals and stuff like that, just as a way of kind of balancing that a little bit. So, religion was kind of one thing, because that was just pertinent at that time, but obviously, the concept applies to, you know, all sorts of socio-economic differences that are, that we see in the communities. And that we don't necessarily have in our community right now, but that we might.
From a curricular standpoint, Phil, when we talk about world religions and cultures and things like that, we really first introduced that in fifth grade, just so you kind of understand, a curricular standpoint, through when we started our geography units and things like that. That's when they talk about the different regions of the world, and then the predominant religions and cultures that are discussed through, through those regions of the world too as well. But that starts at fifth grade, and then maybe sixth grade, because that's kind of where our curriculum ties into that. From a primary school, we really don't touch too much of, you know, we don't touch religion much at all, outside of when, in the fourth grade, they might talk about why the explorers came to Wisconsin, or they talk about, they might talk about, well, it's pretty Christianity, and that's pretty much where it stops. And that's pretty much where it stops from that standpoint too as well. So that's kind of the curricular.
Yeah, and I think the hiccup was just that in, you know, in primary, we don't explicitly talk about religion, but we implicitly foster specific religions. Right? Like...
We talk about, well, we, what I would say is, is to your part, we have a Christmas party, which celebrates the...
We have Santa on workshops.
The capital, what I kind of described, the capitalistic Christmas. But we're not talking about, you know, the, you know, what it means from a religious aspect.
Sure.
You know, with what Christianity means to our primary school kids, nor are we using symbols of the religion component. There's symbols of the season, you know, a Christmas tree, Santa Claus.
Well, I mean, the Christmas tree and Santa Claus are only a symbol of the season because of the religion. Right?
Well, I would say it's a symbol of the day, what Christmas represents for some people and obviously, but we are not, we're staying away from what the true religious component is. And we're just kind of celebrating the American holiday of Christmas without religion.
Okay.
So then, how do you explain when in some classrooms they celebrate the Saint Nick's Day? Which is a Catholic holiday?
Well, Saint.
I'm a bad Catholic. I just, I just, I just get a little bit of a... It makes a big deal out of it. I can't, yeah, I can't remember that.
Well, just like, yes, you may not directly tie Santa as a religious symbol, but...
Santa's not a religious symbol.
Santa is a symbol of, that is associated with a religious holiday.
Okay, so I guess, what do we want to do here? What is the plan?
I was, I was just bringing up the conversation of asking, is what we're doing okay? Because I know my opinion is not necessarily the same as the community's. And that's fine, but I wanted to bring up the question of, are we okay with what we're doing? And are we, are we purposefully doing this or is it just by accident? Because whatever we decide to do in terms of, yes, we're going to still have Christmas parties or no, we're not, or whatever, my point was just that it should be purposeful, not accidental.
I think it actually is purposeful. I think it's a reflection of our community. That's the way I look at it. What we're doing is not simplifying, not trying to sway our children to go one direction or the other.
I mean, and again, the religion was one thing of it, right? But it's, the argument of the conversation is appropriate for any sort of different, any different cultural difference, right? Or racial difference or whatever. And so I, I mean, it kind of lends itself towards being a conversation about inclusion, not being inclusive like an educational perspective, right? But inclusion in the more, you know, Webster's definition of the word. You know, if we are having Christmas parties, you know, there are potentially people of different religions that would live in this community that don't celebrate Christmas and so we're not including them and what their culture is. And is that okay? And maybe it is because 80% of the community is Christian and so that's just what it is. But I was just bringing it up as a point of conversation of, is this what we want to do?
I'm comfortable with the direction we've been going for a number of years. We'll talk about introducing religion in the curriculum. I don't think it needs to be any earlier for our kids. I think probably very appropriate to use religion with the fifth grade and the geography enough. And so...
And I guess until...
I don't like creating issues.
So if the argument is then, so the argument is then that the Christmas celebrations or whatever are culturally based, not religion based, which is fine. I can understand that. So then, then the question still remains, are we okay only showing this culture and, or not even only, are we, are we okay showing this culture 95% of the time and spending 5% of our time showing the other seven billion people in the world? Right? That's fundamentally the question. And if we all say, yes, we're okay with that, then okay, we'll blinders on, we'll keep going.
I don't think it's blinders on. Because they're, they learn different religions if they pray.
And it's not even just religion, that's my point though. And that was just the pertinent thing as we were talking about the Christmas party, right? But just other cultures in general.
And isn't that correct? They're learning about other cultures?
In fifth grade is when we, that gets first introduced.
First introduced.
Truly, not just culture, not just, not religion, but culture. Culture, culture, that's really our first, where we start to talk about. So if we wanted to have a discussion through a curricular lens to say, do you want to look at your social studies curriculum or your literacy curriculum to really begin to bring that down a little bit more, when you highlight different cultures and of, you know, whether it be Jewish culture, I mean, Jennifer at our discussion that you and I rattled off of holiday, and I'm sorry, I didn't really remember what it was, nor did I know what it was.
It's a Wali.
But I think it was for Hinduism. Hinduism. So, which by the way, we all celebrate where I work. There's nothing wrong with that. I mean, so, I mean, I mean, it's, and I think it's Wali is, is an example. I think it's perhaps started as, I think it's as a religious base, but it's become bigger than that. It's more of a cultural thing. And I think, I think that is, I think that's fine. I mean, if we wanted to say, hey, there's this, there's the wallet, what's that?
There's three religions that celebrate it.
Well, I mean, my friends are...
Yes.
Yeah. But I think it's okay to sell, to talk about that, but I mean, I don't think it means that something has to go away at the same time.
Yeah, that's fair.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be...
Yeah, it's not, it can be, I'd rather have it, you know, have it in hand.
In hand, not in either order.
Yeah.
Yes. Though I think, yes, that was what our whole conversation had been, right?
Yes.
It's not, we shouldn't have any culture or, right? It was that we should have more of them and expose our kids to more of them so that they see what the world actually is.
Right. It just, it just seemed like it started with a real focus on the holiday celebrations that, you know, that happen around Christmas time and that this needs to be diminished. So we can talk about, I mean, I don't think it, there's, there's not just one time in a full year that we can talk about.
No, but there are two other holidays right at Christmas time that aren't talked about. Kwanzaa and...
They're not?
I just...
Not that I can say that...
So that's the Rukris.
Yeah.
I don't know. I mean, I guess I...
No.
Not talked about at all. Not that I can...
No.
Not, not something that I can point to our curriculum that is a guaranteed viable option that all students get compared to our fifth grade example where we can guarantee that all students are going to be exposed to X, Y, Z.
Right. And even with, like, speaking of just culture and not just religiosity, Kwanzaa isn't a religious holiday, it's a cultural celebration. And it's not covered. I know Hanukkah isn't, because all of my kids have learned have been at home.
Right.
We also skip festivals.
We celebrate it.
But so I think that if we want to go that direction, I think, or, you know, kind of continue that, maybe this is a student achievement thing where we start talking, taking a look at where are the curricular opportunities to tie those, the other cultures in.
And I think it would, yeah, it would be more an exercise of, all right, let's just look at what are the cultures in the world, right? And then try and pick, you know, all right, so there's seven major cultures or however you want to define these things, right? And then pick some aspect of those that you're then, you know, presenting throughout the year to try and put some balance to it. Does that make sense?
That certainly is something that, you know, through, through...
That's a very systematic way of...
It's kind of like if, you know, the way we highlight Martin Luther King or we highlight some things that, you know, are very important, that come up on the calendar, that it's, because Martin Luther King isn't in our curriculum.
Right.
But yet we highlight what he met his, you know, Zero Lactation Underpays and all these other things, but we highlight him...
Well, that happens at, you know, at least down to a second grade level.
Yeah, sure.
Right?
Yep.
So I mean, when you're talking about, you know, where this happens, it doesn't have to start at fifth grade. I mean, those sort of cultural things can be...
Right.
So then I guess we need to distinguish between maybe the recency bias that came in kind of when the conversation started, because it was right by the winter holiday Christmas concerts. And say, okay, that was a great commendable success to the staff that put it together and all this difference.
Oh, yeah, the concerts were great.
Amazing. And that should be celebrated. So then, I just want to make sure we're not getting this all mashed together, that I'm all in favor of further exposure to culture and education, great.
Right.
But it shouldn't be at the expense of other work and celebration.
Right.
So if I understand...
Sure.
Okay.
I mean, it's known we have a winter solstice concert and there's no, I mean, don't get anybody personalized, first off, the board, which maybe that would be okay, but I mean, I'm saying that's what, I'm that's what...
It's fair. We're elected officials that represent the community that elected us. And I understand that. And I, like Phil said, when we brought it up last time, it wasn't, it was, like, we were around the holiday season. And it wasn't to necessarily stop what's already happening, it's to grow what's happening to include more.
So I think we can probably bring this up as a student achievement opportunity and kind of look for and look to see what opportunities we have and see what that might be age appropriate at each of those grade levels moving forward. So and then I think it's just highlighting what those days are and breaking those forward. And then ultimately, from a district standpoint, we begin to start looking for curricular resources and supports that are age appropriate, that can assist with our kids, but ultimately help our staff out with that too as well. So you can do that. All right. Thank you.
Okay, we're out to this discussion on outdoor slash indoor play equipment and services.
Everybody ready? So as, as you guys know, we've been continuing to keep up to date and been working with PTO and our families and things like that. And just kind of wanted to give a little update and just kind of, again, it's just kind of a discussion with the board if they wanted to give some feedback or we can continue to gather more information, but just wanted to make sure that you guys were in the loop about what conversations are occurring with John, Becca in particular, moving forward too, as well as well as PTO. So some conversations focused on the 4K playground and their possible resurfacing. I know PTO is working with getting the shed and getting some more materials out there and things, but it seems like there continues to be a conversation and some feasibility to possibly resurfacing the current...
Is that wood chips?
No, this one has black rubber. This one has black rubber. We were in the front of school, so about 15 years ago, and John can kind of fill us in a little bit there too as well, about 15 years ago, that was put in right at the inception. So it's still got good life to it. It still is being able to be fixed. We have replacement parts and things like that. The surface is, is still safe for children. It certainly is. From, it's a rubber surface and it's, it's soft and it's functional from what it, what it does too. So I guess, John, is there anything else from that, that 4K standpoint?
The biggest concerns I've gotten from 4K over the years is the sand issue. And we have been working, you know, with the PTO and coming up with a solution with having an Eagle Scout build a sandbox off to the side. I think that would really alleviate a lot of the complaints that we're getting from them. The surface was put in in '05, '06 school year when the original play equipment was purchased. I know I mentioned at the PTO at their meeting this past month about, you know, surfaces and I talked about how our new playground surface and how soft and breaks up the ice as you're walking across it. And I talked about the 4K surface was out there at the same time, walked that, it was still cushy even, you know, in the winter weather. There was no snow on it because of the blackness in the surface of it. Grimmer Leisure Products was out over Christmas and we talked about the 4K surface and the company that installed it is still in business. They can do repairs on it if there's a need for repairs. It can be resealed to, you know, if there's any concern about, you know, kids getting marks and stuff like that, they said you can reseal the surface. When we talk about putting a new surface on it, my feeling on it is it's kind of like the back playground. We didn't spend the money to put a new surface down because of the age of the equipment. With the equipment out there being 15 years old already, we got 24 years out of the other play equipment and, you know, just putting a lot of money into a surface where possibly the next 10 years, you could be replacing that equipment anyways. So that's just...
One of the things if we did, and I did check with Jason Frederick, we would go with a turf surface. Obviously, they could pull it up and they would have to patch. So it's not, it's not like it's unusable if in fact, certainly would, you could, if you get new equipment, it's not unusable. But ultimately, there would be an additional cost. Obviously, they'd have to patch, seal, renew, pull it back and things like that too as well, to that too. So...
Well, to put in new turf?
Yep.
Where the 4K equipment is now, does the 4K equipment have to come out?
Nope. Nope. They would be able to cut a rim.
But when the 4K equipment is reinstalled and the turf would have to come out and then the new stuff would go on and then they'd repatch in the turf.
You got it. You got it. Yep. So they would roll it, it's actually like a carpet, so they roll it back and actually there's two, I mean, Jason Frederick said there's two ways to do it. One is that you can use the existing rubber surface that's down, that you can just put it on top. And that's just about a $14,000 project, he said approximately. And if you would dig up and remove the current rubber surface and put, similar to what John was saying, the new foam, it wouldn't be as thick because you don't have the 20-foot drop height, that's not needed. So it's, but it's going to be another squishy foam and that total is right around $19,000 to do that area.
So what are the complaints that are coming from whoever they're coming from about the turf?
The sand basically is the one that comes to John because the sand gets on there on the slide and stuff like that.
Slippery and stuff, yeah, I get that.
Slippery stuff. And I think the, from what I've heard is, is that the kids get dirty from it, I think is the biggest thing, where the kids get dirty when they're crawling around on the black surface. I think, I guess I would engage the skill on that, on our catering. That's what I've heard.
Dirty that when it, like, the heat conduction of it, yeah, it's great in the winter to melt snow, but in the summer, warm fall day, warm spring day, it's a really, really super hot surface. And then another concern is it's essentially compressed used rubber tires and those, I mean, so it's 15-year-old surface? When those break down, you're just...
It's rubber. It's just a rubber tire.
Rubber tires that if you Google or do any research about what really happens when those break down, it's not safe. And I, I don't see why we wouldn't resurface the 4K areas to match the rest of everything that we're doing. I think it's safer and it's good. It's equally as good when it is snowing, like John said, how it breaks up. From an aesthetic standpoint, I think if we're talking about attracting families and open enrollment, it's a great, I mean, taking the health portion off, it just, it looks better. It would be, I think, safer, from talking to Catherine Bullis... It would be, I think, safer from talking to Catherine, Bullis, the ridge that's around, I don't know if you're familiar with.
Plastic, no.
Like plastic ridge that's like driven in with spikes.
Yep.
That's a concern with kids.
They tripped it, I remember it's Spanish.
Yeah. And I, I get, yeah, they're into the bushes, the barbered bushes, I have, there's, there's that, but. So, I mean, like if this was a, I've been to more PTO meetings, I've been thinking about this for a while and I just don't know how everybody else feels or if they want to.
The PTO.
Think about it and consider it, but if I had to vote right now, it would be something that I would vote the district resurface.
Nineteen grand doesn't seem like a lot, John.
Right. PTO is, this is a big topic for PTO, PTO would really enjoy and really like the, the district to take on this project.
If they've got a thousand dollars, they can donate to it now.
I don't know why you just keep pointing at your wife is here. There's two other people.
So, I, I guess, in the big, in the big picture, I mean, obviously this is just one piece in working with PTO. The second piece that we've been working with them on is, is some outdoor behind the primary school, taking a look at what are some of the alternatives to kind of continue to keep kids active, both, both sentry in mind for kids who may not walk too well around and, and play soccer and be on the playground. What other opportunities can we do there with creative play, creative blocks, some, some, just some creation type of activities? But then ultimately, we talked about, we do have a wide open area right now where we, John's point, we did pull out a twenty-four year playset last year and right now it is vacant with just wood chips. So, the district has some options about what we want to do. One is, is you can repurpose that with a new playset. John, we do have one proposal, John did go out and I saw one proposal that, that just adding some equipment into there that is different and then unique. The playset itself, it runs anywhere between sixty thousand and eighty thousand dollars just for some different, unique, because we didn't want to put just another big playset in there, we wanted to put some different modular pieces, something that was a little bit different. So John was able to secure, just in one bid, we just wanted to get an idea about what that might cost to be able to do that. And if you were to put a playset in there, kind of to Katie's point, we would want to put turf or some sort of surface, and right now it's just wood chips, those wood chips are getting all over. We'd want some sort of surface in there that would be a little bit more uniform, but ultimately universally being able to be used. So, if you wanted to put turf in, it's right around fifty-three thousand, you add that to some more play equipment, you're looking at about a hundred and twenty thousand dollar project approximately to do that. Now, from an administrative standpoint, we do not feel we need another playset or we need any set structures in the ground because of our current structures that we have, as well as the possibility of adding some additional pieces. John and the PTO are working together to create a very large shed or to have a large shed come in so pieces can come easily in and out. That would be, you know, in the form of big blocks and some other fun play opportunities and creation opportunities as well too. The administration is kind of leaning more towards if we were to do something with that area, blacktop. Ultimately, right now, we've got just obviously a bunch of wood chips with a, a rim around where we've got a barrier around it. Ultimately, water continues to get in there and it seeps out, but with what we would see those activities happening that can come out of the shed, those can be part of blacktop, they can go on there. And getting that blacktop is right around a forty thousand dollar opportunity because there are pylons in there that are from the old playset that may have to come out, as well as pulling out the, John, what's the technical term for, not the bridge, but it's curb. The curb, thank you. The curb needs to come out, so there needs to be some work there. And then we would just patch it up, reseal the whole area, which is, it's on the docket for this upcoming summer anyway, and all of a sudden, we've got ourselves a flat play surface right there too. Where all the things that can come out of the shed, that can go right there and it's another wide open space from that standpoint.
Could we have those proposals brought to the facility team?
Yep.
Katie, you're on the facility team, but you've got a lot of your liaison with the PTO. And we could do that.
Yep.
And put those together with our priorities for the stuff coming.
Yep, we certainly can, we can run through that committee. The, the other piece I just wanted to mention is our indoor play structure, an indoor play area that Becca has been, continued to engage with, with Abby Klubundy, Purposeful Play, with, with some of the things about just looking at what are the opportunities that could exist as we take a look at those, you know, twenty-five to thirty days that, given in Wisconsin, it's raining, it's cold, it's just inclement that our kids can't go out. In that indoor play area, would we be looking for some sort of a structure or a playground structure where kids can do their gross motor skills and continue to be engaged actively regardless of what the weather is out? Right now, we've got Lego walls and there's talk about a marble wall coming in, so there's a, we still want to keep those opportunities. So we're going to continue to engage from a facility standpoint and ultimately continue to engage the board and PTO because this is a great partnership activity about where would the best possibility for this place to go? We know we've got options, we continue to take a look at what all those options are. We know we have two large group areas that are very much underutilized. We also know that indoor play can get loud, so what kind of opportunity, and that's why we say, well, you know, the cafeteria would be great, but that also brings some downfall too at the same time. So, we've got some ideas that we can continue to bring to the facility team. For instance, if we wanted to enclose one of the large group areas, okay, that's, that's certainly an option. It's not taking away from, you know, when we talk about, from the, going back to our community forum, you know, about a space restriction, about somebody's losing something because right now, that space is just being underutilized.
And, and soundproof, because if they're doing indoor play in there, those classrooms right there are still going to hear to those walls.
Correct, yep, we know, and that would be part of if we were to build those, and obviously we've got one brick wall there.
Right.
And Becca continues to do some reconnaissance for us about how loud that might be in there. But Jennifer, that's really the, the key structure, the key component is, is we don't want it to disrupt our learning environments. And, you know, what can be done from a soundproofing thing to be able to maximize that opportunity? So, more to come and we'll work through the facility team, but just kind of wanted to give, and if anybody's got any feedback, because the indoor play is something that is, we're really looking at as from a district investment standpoint and the partnership with PTO, if that's something that everybody's willing to do here too. So, we're still, I'd say at the ten thousand foot level, we've got ideas and then ultimately we'll continue to bring it down into the weeds and work through some of those dynamics that we need to as well. So, we'll continue to talk to everybody.
Any other discussion? Then we're on to future meetings and agenda items. February twenty-fourth for our February meeting, March sixteen for our monthly meeting in March, and April twenty-seventh, meeting on the agenda.
Is everybody okay with, I moved our monthly, the March meeting before spring break compared to after? Because Monday after, if somebody's traveling late, you know, coming in a little bit late from traveling, or if there's weather, again, and talking to Sherry, we really don't have anything financial that's, you know, that we need to wait for the end of March, so let's see, just kind of prove in the middle of March if that's okay. Okay.
Any agenda items?
For upcoming meetings and I'll work with Katie and Dean about getting on the facility, we'll set a facility team meeting to talk about some things. The student achievement committee, I just have been working with Jennifer and kind of work around from the per schedule, so I'll reach out to you guys tomorrow as it relates to a possible date, figure something secure too on that standpoint. Jim Jobs. Just told me I feel responsibility for three. Yep. So.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
We have motion to adjourn in a second, or in favor then say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same time, you can adjourn.
All right, here's everybody.